Well, let me guess. I mean, with your background, you're not.
We can't even answer your question.
Oh, my gosh.
I can understand.
It wasn't, it wasn't fixed yet.
It was.
At least four, four, three and a half.
I'm pretty good at fixing them.
I'm just the person.
Yeah, I guess that shouldn't be.
Experience. Yeah.
But it's still.
Take the wins.
Yeah, just that's.
A lot of nails.
Right. I'm in front of a choice. He went to go out where they went today. I went on my. Exactly. Like he's still about to. Ten years ago.
And then he's been using my dog.
And it was the other.
Somebody that was. From the.
That was.
I heard that was hard to. You mend the Fisher's. I already got. Many.
We need to get a front end. My house come down.
So wild.
I thought sure. I forgot.
Right.
They were.
Proportions. And they were just. Make shift.
I felt badly leaving the bridge there.
Emergency rather than taking it use. And they made it to the chant. And we're just saying.
Set up.
All right, so we're gonna go ahead and call this meeting ordered. Meet Denver, which. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Go ahead and have the roll call.
The order.
Here.
Noonan is absent before I notice. Black.
Yes.
Couple lives. Absent before I notice. Blunder. Carlson. Miller. Nixon.
Here.
I had exam. First of all. Trouble. Present.
Which is paid for. Excellent. Next up, we have consideration of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Uh, I will take a motion to approve the agenda as presented, yes.
So.
All right, votes made by Mr. Nixon, supported by Mr. Black. As presented in the further discussion. All those favor, signify, say aye.
Aye.
All both same sign. Motion carried. Next up, we have conflict of interest. Are there any members on this commission here with a conflict of interest with any items on the agenda? All right. Next up, we are to public comment. Is there any public that will want to offer any comments? Uh, next up, we're up to staff comments.
Okay, a couple of things. April twenty seventh, tomorrow evening is the annual planning session here in this room. It's on farming and agriculture in your community. So it is sponsored by the County Planning Commission. So for those who are able to attend tomorrow, you can get here six, six fifteen. Starts at six thirty and we asked everybody to do like you've done in the past. Just bring something simple to pass. Lookies, something like that, so that we can. Have some snacks here for those who are in attendance. I think we have a good turnout, about thirty five people. It said that it would be here in person and then we have nearly twenty now that are registered to watch. Gail and I will be leaving for the APA conference this Friday and we'll be back next Tuesday. So the information that we gathered at that conference and the different sessions, we'll do a little summary typed up and share it with all of you and any links that we have, that any presentations and so forth, and then we'll get that off. Townships and villages as well. The two twenty twenty two recycling collections are all posted on the website and you can register for them online. I also have a flyer up there next to the sign and sheet if anyone wants to pick that up. And then finally, the CIP, Capital Improvement Program. Usually we have it on your agenda by now, but we got a lot of the post-CIP projects a little bit late, so they're on my desk. We're scanning them and we got quite a few this year. And I'm just looking at how I want to present those to you. I've kind of toyed with the idea of staff giving them a quick review and maybe trying to prioritize them a little bit before we get them out to you, just so we can speed up the process a little bit. So that should be on your meeting next month.
Any questions for staff? Next up, we have the consideration of the March fifteenth, twenty twenty two meeting minutes. If everybody has a chance to review them, are there any questions, corrections, or anything in that regard?
I would just say again, that was a very provoked meeting and Gail, I think, must be who took those minutes. Uh, should be commended on the comprehensiveness of the detail of it. And this really impressive. Thank you. So I motion move that we approve the March fifteen twenty twenty minutes as presented.
Motion made, Mr. Nixon, supported by Ms. Carlson, to approve the meeting minutes as presented. Any further discussion? All right, now, all those in favor signify, say aye.
Aye.
All both same sign. Carry. Next up, under new business, we have the Cleveland Township text amendments. I will let staff come over there and review and then I'll. Comments.
Right, this is a request from Cleveland Township to add agricultural tourism into their zoning limits. And Dean Monet, as chairman of the planning commission, is here tonight, who can also answer questions that you might have on it or clarify anything. On the, let's see, page eight of your packet, we have some texts that we've inserted from the Cleveland Township Master Plan as well as the Little Larch River Plan dealing with agricultural operations and agricultural tourism. The Township Planning Commission held their public hearing on April sixth and following that, they made a motion to send this on to the County Planning Commission and the Township Board. Then, the next page, page nine of yours, of your packet, we have the questions that we generally ask regarding any kind of a zoning ordinance amendment. Then down under the history, we pointed out that last year in April twenty twenty one, a resident made a request to the township that they considered doing an amendment for the lawful uses on agricultural properties and they did supply some sample language for consideration. The email from the township from April eleventh of this year states the resident wanted established farm stays as a way to supplement farm operation income. And this idea aligned with the Cleveland Township Master Plan. And since the township was approached with the suggestion, they've worked out a proposed amendment to add it to Article eleven of the agricultural district. So, actually, I'm sorry, that's a nine, not eleven. So, just the amendment to section nine eleven to add agricultural tourism. They have added some definitions for community-supported agriculture, farm stay and working farms, and they provided a list of permitted agricultural tourism uses for working farms along their understanding of the expectations for those uses for farm operators, local residents, businesses, and local officials. The next page, we pointed out that the definition states that less than fifty percent of farm income is derived from non-agricultural tourism sales and services over a five-year period, and that requires documentation to show that that's occurring. And so we just question, is that going to be responsibility of the zoning administrator to gather that information and make sure that the working farm is complying with that section? We then listed some of the permitted uses by right for working farms in that district. And following that bullet list, we noted that open air or covered picnic area requires restrooms and adequate trash receptacles. And what about those same items for farm stays and food landing options? And it would also be beneficial if they had some recycling receptacles as well. There are parking requirements and site plan review required under item three A for other uses. So the permitted uses such as the corn and hay mazes along slave hay rides are allowed by right. They are not required to follow parking and site plan review, but yet these are types of uses that can create a great deal of traffic and parking can be a concern. And I just point you to M seventy-two and Jacobs Corn Maze. There were some times I was coming through there this past summer. We were going to be twenty miles an hour on seventy-two to get through there. It was unbelievable, the traffic. The proposed amendment, in that next section, we point out what it would allow and that the use would be ancillary to the farm on which it is located, including things such as farm stays, extended homestead and farm experiences such as lodging. They have to be on parcels that are ten acres or greater in size. Only one farm stay or homestead operation allowed in a maximum of four campsites for rooms and land use permits are also required, as well as standards such as bucking and review approval by the rural commission, prior chief and health department. We've noted that this amendment is very similar to the ag tourism section that is in the center of the township zoning ordinance already. And this text appears consistent with the township's master plan, provides additional ways that farmers can make an income for their farm. We also know there's going to be an upcoming webinar in May on accessory dwelling units, which are seeing a renewed interest to help provide housing options that are desperately needed. Some communities have made changes to their zoning language to allow ADUs anywhere there's a single-family residence including farms. So May thirteenth is the first session. I'm going to be doing some of the introduction and we have several speakers on that. And then I think it's really important that we get our communities to look at this in a new light. And then there's a link at the bottom of that page. It's a free session. You just have to register for it. And that's it for checkouts.
All right. Next up, we'll move on to issue comments. Trump, do you have anything, or any comments or questions that you have, Dan?
I do not.
Will you, Mr. Black?
No.
So.
The only comment I might make was when our staff made it, I don't want to be redundant by. There's concern about how off the verification of the definition of farm was going to be required. I know of sales and services, you mentioned over a five-year period, but I don't know if that's something the zoning administrators want to need to perform every year or anytime there's a concern. I would just suggest you look again at the definition of working farm and maybe not add the conditions in there that require more validating. Definitely.
Mr. Robler?
I may be exposing my own ignorance here, but term lamp, what is the definition going to be?
Kind of an upgraded type of camping. Some people have them out on platforms, limited areas and so forth. If you're familiar with nature over by, um, like school, I believe they offer some of that up there in their area as well.
I looked it up online and I saw some pictures. That's what we're talking about. So do we need to define that? Or is it a universal enough term that to what it ventures from glamorous camping to something beyond that? I mean, it just seems like an undefined term. I looked it up online. Gathering from the picture, what you pretty much described. Putting up on basically a platform, so I just.
Is there anything you wanted to add, Dean?
No, I, no, I appreciate your inputs so far, so keep going. Take it all. We will be talking about.
Anybody have any questions for Dean or you have more similar?
No. Parking requirement seems to have been covered. That would be concerning. Working, the definition of working farm, we have farmer on our planning commission name. Servants farm. Preservation. So they, they know it's a very complicated. Some years farm can be involved, some years it makes. So you look at, so it's hard to figure out what a working farm is. That's why they suggested. I have your window.
And that required then the farmer presents to the township evidence of adding to the private city zone. Every five years. That requires some bookkeeping of did the farmer come in or not come in, or are there farmers out there that didn't do it? Why, you know, I am pleased to see the the recognition of agricultural tourism and expanding opportunities here for a farmer to have some other revenue. Farm stays is not a term I'm particularly familiar with, but it sounds like that's what initiated this to someone's interest in providing some accommodations. And, and that's a critical issue for all of us. So really pleased to see that even if you've already begun to address it.
Any other questions for Dean's staff? Now, we need a motion, I guess, to forward this on to the Cleveland Township Board.
So.
All right. This is important. All right. Votes made by Mr. Nixon, supported by Mr. Black to forward the staff mission comments on the Cleveland Township Board. Any further discussion? All right, now, all those in favor signify, say aye. All both same sign. Motion carried. One up. Thanks, Dean. Next up, right into, we have Glen Arbor Text Township Text Amendment, Single Family Dwellings, as previously, I'll let staff kind of move ahead with this. So give us a report.
This is a request from Glen Arbor Township to add single-family dwelling residential structures in the business district. We've noted in here that the Township Planning Commission held their public hearing on April seventh and the minutes indicate that one letter was received only, excuse me, opposing the proposed amendment. And after the hearing, they unanimously approved the motion to allow these in the, in the district if the parcel of land is not above M twenty-two North of State Street and R one requirements are applied. We've answered the questions here in the section four analysis and we do have some staff comments in the following section, section six. Under the history, this might be familiar to you because first off, back in two thousand and seven, there was a request from Glen Arbor Township to remove single-family dwellings as a permitted use in the business district. And they did allow multifamily dwellings and apartments, living units, but not single-family residential. And if I recall correctly from some past minutes, I believe their concern then was having enough commercial area in Glen Arbor for, you know, the commercial uses. Last year in June of two thousand and twenty-one, the County Planning Commission reviewed another case, which was a request from the township to eliminate those words, except, except single-family dwellings. So basically, they were going to take them, they were going to allow it now in the business district. The County Planning Commission sent its review back to the township and the township board later sent that amendment back to the township planning commission to get more clarity with a finding of fact. So now it's revised, it's back here again. So they're proposing adding language as item J in the section eight use regulations in Article eight Business District. Single-family dwelling residential structures are allowed if the parcel of land is not above M twenty-two North of State Street and R one requirements are applied. The current zoning ordinance includes a definition for single-family dwelling. And the question here, is single-family dwelling residential structure supposed to be different from single-family dwelling? There's no definition for that. It's just something I haven't seen before, so we're questioning that. Also, in the next section there on page twenty-three of your packet, we've noted that if they approve this, they're going to have a conflict between an item A and an item J one says it's not allowed. The other one will say that it is allowed. So there's, you need to look back at that section. I think they made some cleanup work there. The master plan text is included on the bottom of that page in the beginning of the next page. And then we noted towards the bottom of page twenty-four, there are three separate areas of business, telling about her forty, hundred and four acres. Most of that property is located within the village, but there's also an area in the homestead and a small area in a Fisher Lake Zone Business. And the property at the north end of Fisher Lake has been split. It now consists of four parcels. So if it, if this amendment is allowed, that's single-family residential. Once it's going to be allowed in the business district and the township, it includes more than just the downtown area, whatever. So this amendment differs from the one from two thousand and twenty-one as it only allows them on certain properties in the business district. If you look at the map, which is a later page in the staff report, the red area in Glen Arbor shows the business district. Our interpretation of what they're saying here is that only the parcels in that district, which are not touching M twenty-two, would not be allowed, excuse me, the ones touching M twenty-two would not be allowed, single-family dwelling residential structures. All the other lots, including those in the homestead area on Fisher Lake, would be permitted. So we caution the township here on one item is that placing different regulations on properties because they're located in a certain area, but they're still within the same business district. You know, we caution them on that because under the Michigan Zoning Law Act, it says, except as otherwise provided under this act, the regulations shall be uniform for each class of land or buildings, dwellings, and structures within a district. And this came up once before, quite a few years ago, down in Empire Township. What it didn't have to do with residential structures, but it had to do with setbacks. And if the use was located on M seventy-two or some other major roads in the township, then they had different setbacks than other uses, but they were still within the same district. So we caution townships not to do that. And then later, we point out here is, you know, can the township legally enforce this? Have they checked with their attorney on it? Because if they're challenged, attorney is going to be the one that's defending them on any challenge to this. So if there's a reason, if there's, if these parcels warrant a different treatment than others within the same district, it's better to just put them in a different district. So you could do like a business two district for all those ones that are buddy M twenty-two and maybe, maybe things are really similar to the business district, but it doesn't allow them to put the single-family residential instead of trying to apply different regulations to the same uses within the same district. So we caution on that. And then at the bottom of that page twenty-five, this is just a comment that we put in from two thousand and twenty-one staff report as well. We looked at the minutes from April twenty-two. It deals with the public hearings. So public hearings should be opened. You get the public comments, you close them. And then the discussion is held by the members and then they take action or maybe they take action at a future meeting. But it's not a time where the members of the board or the commission talk about it. It's public comment. So you could, in theory, you could open a public hearing and state that there's no comment because nobody commented. And then you close it and then you carry on with your business. But during that public hearing, that's the time for the public to talk, not the time for the numbers to discuss if they do it later. So we want to get that public comment first. So we've repeated that similar type of comment here in the staff report.
All right, move on. Any comments, commissioners? Mrs. Trumble, you have any comments?
I do not.
Mr. Black?
No, no, please don't.
Mr. Carlson?
I like Trudy's comments.
Mr. Nixon?
I was, I appreciate the comments, too. I was confused about what they were doing here exactly. And when I read through your comments, I thought, what a simple solution, probable solution to what seemingly appeared to be a rather complex issue. And so I, I would just add my emphasis, as Gail has to her, to the comments that staff made as a recommendation, that they certainly pay attention to that and look carefully at maybe the wisdom of just completely re-zoning these areas unless there's something terribly unique and not fully understood. And secondly, I appreciate what you said again tonight, Trudy, but isn't it frustrating? You've probably made that statement about how to conduct public hearings many times, as I've said on this commission. And it seems like people are not hearing it well or there are new members that don't understand it well. I don't know what we can do to facilitate that understanding, but it seems to be a continual misunderstanding or mistake that a lot of communities are making when they hold public input sessions.
Yes, right. It has come up in many of the townships and villages in the county and I'm sure it's come up in other areas as well. It's, you know, there's just a proper way to do it. And in some cases, sometimes in the minutes, they don't even say that. They open the public hearing or that they close it. Or maybe they say they opened it, but they never say when it closed. And you're actually supposed to do that and record the time. So, you know, when it opens and it closes.
And if I can, Mr. Chairman, just ask one question, Trudy. Does the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act specify how long how long an ordinance has to be on the books before it's permitted to be changed? Because I, I respect the fact that Glen Arbor thought they had it one way, were obviously not comfortable with it, reversed the, the residential housing. And now they're back to saying, well, we do want to do that. Is there any restriction on, you have to wait a year? Maybe instantly, if, if a township passes approval of language, can that be reversed in thirty days?
They have to follow the public notifications, all of that public process.
So why would you do that? Am I supposed to?
Yeah, I can't think of anything else off the top of my head. On that, I know some townships in their zoning ordinance is, if you apply for rezoning and you're denied, they have a limit, like you can't apply again for a year. Some of them have limits, so they're, they're not just repeating that over and over again from back home. But the township itself, as long as they follow all their proper procedures, I don't believe there's anything on that.
Just curious. Thank you.
Miller, getting on us? Do you? Got a real can of words here in terms of leaves five point. So I agree with your idea that they should create a it's two, it's something that defines what they want.
All right. Yeah, no, I, when I read through it as well, I got, I was confused as I'd never seen anything that you would in essence, allow something like that alongside the road, just because it's alongside the road in the same district. So I, I was confused and when I read your report, it certainly made a lot more sense, so. But yeah, and I guess reference to what Mr. Nixon said about public hearing. Maybe, I mean, maybe that's something we need to focus on future training sessions, maybe. Focus on that and do that in the future where we do something like that. We're just going to get it with all townships, you know, to offer some sort of training on that to offer guidance and stuff, not properly do things. It seems like it's a common issue that staff needs attention to that, so. All right, is there any any representatives from Glen Arbor here? No, is it, no?
Property owners. But I don't. All right.
All right. Any other questions for staff or comments for the text amendment? All right. If not, I guess we'll take a motion to forward this on to the Glen Arbor Township Board.
So.
All right, votes made by Mr. Black. Part of him is Trumble to forward staff commission comments on to the town Glen Arbor Township Board. Any further discussion? Now, all those in favor signify, say aye. All both same sign. Motion carried. All right, next up, we have the Castle Township Master Plan Review. I don't know if everybody had a chance to review. It's a huge document. But as usual, I will let staff, you push that, of course, and then we'll move on to comments.
Okay, this was a request that came from the township on March eighteenth. The review period ends April thirtieth. The township actually has a working session this Thursday night, so they've asked if we could get minutes back to them throughout the minutes. Shouldn't be too difficult. I told them that we could get them something so that they have to follow this meeting. So they've been working on this update for some time. The distribution of the draft was approved by the township board on February eighth. And then there was a memorandum dated March eighth that came to the county. And we received it on March eighteenth. The township held a public hearing on April eighteenth and again, we had the work session on April twenty-eighth. And page three of the plan to commence the history and the update process that they've gone through. And we've noted here that there weren't any minutes available yet from the April eighteenth public hearing, so we weren't able to attach them to the staff report. At the bottom of that page, we go through the basis for the plan review and what needs to be. At the bottom of that page, we go through the basis for the plan review and what needs to be done. And then the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act. On the next page, we go through our series of questions and analysis. And we've noted on here, for instance, the first question on intergovernmental regional context. We've noted that the plan doesn't specifically talk about greater cooperation between neighboring units of government, but it does include language regarding working with the county and working with other entities. And then we've gone down to list a couple other questions. I want to point out at the bottom of that page talks about, does the proposed plan include parcel-specific future land use recommendations? And we've noted that the map is not parcel-specific. Page twelve of the plan does state the designations on the future land uses map are general nature, therefore not intended to correspond to property lines. And then the next question, we have to deal with design guidelines, and we noted that the proposed plan does not specifically have design guidelines. Under staff comments, section five, we've noted what a master plan is. It's, it's that vision for our community, how they're going to develop over time, and it provides guidance to them on how areas should be zoned and what we should put into the zoning ordinance. Their plan on the website is from two thousand and fourteen. We've noted here that at least every five years, you have to review the master plan to determine if you're going to proceed with a new master plan or adopt, excuse me, adopt a new one. And it's not a requirement that you do the update every five years, but you do have to do the review and recording that decision in the minutes is very important. So people know that the review was completed in time and fashion. We've also noted here under section forty-three of the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act that the final approval is by the planning commission unless the legislative body has a resolution passed that asserts their right to either approve or reject the master plan. Some communities, the legislative body takes this action, and in others, it's given to the planning commission. So it will be up to the township board to determine if they're going to pass that resolution and have final say-so, or if the planning commission completes their work and approves the plan, and then that's it, that's us with that. We've noted on this page, some of the survey information that they've included in the plan. They had some interesting questions and some feedback from their, from their citizens. So we put that, a few of those questions in this document. On the top of page thirty-eight of your packet, this is a question dealing with minimum lot sizes. The responses ranged from single-family homes down to senior residential. Each one of those responses received at least one hundred responses from those who took the survey. And then we've noted in here that seasonal rentals and mobile homes were ranked the lowest. That was interesting, that apartments three-plus units only had thirty-nine responses. You had apartments as one of the highest requested housing options in our county. So that was pretty interesting, that it ranked pretty low in the community, but that is what citizens are asking for, the one of those long-term apartments. Also, one of the biggest issues in the county and across the country, of course, is the last lack of housing options for seasonal workforce, year-round rentals and homes. And we felt that the inclusion of more goals and objectives for housing options could help address that lack of housing. We had some spelling corrections and some suggestions for them, starting on page thirty-eight. We did note under their future land use map, there were some areas that appeared like maybe they could be in a different future land use now. Some of them are identified as commercial, but yet they're residential homes. And so we just kind of pointed this out to them to maybe, well, take a look at that map. And again, some more corrections on here. And we did note that on page twenty-two, under policies and actions, they talk about buffering, they talk about clustering of residential housing. And then we asked, you know, are there any of those types of developments being proposed in the township? I think it's been quite a few years since we've seen them anywhere in the county. I don't think the movement is to put these big developments anymore, where there's a lot of clustered housing and saving of open spaces. It doesn't seem to be what we're seeing. So they might want to take a look at that. Maybe there's other type of housing options that they could consider. Again, a few corrections on these pages and some information on their statistics. The two thousand and twenty census data, we put a link on there because some of the information, some of the numbers that they had listed in the plan were a little different than what we saw in the two thousand and twenty census, not off by a lot, but some differences. We also asked if the township considered any long-term objectives within seven-two corridor. Areas along state highways do become very attractive commercial use. It expands out along highway as an example, Chums Corner, you can see what happened there. So while they have identified a lot of area for commercial use along in seven-two, they may see that pressure in future years, and they might want to consider looking at a corridor plan for them. On page thirty-one, we pointed out some information about Michigan Planning and Enabling Act and a capital improvements program. The township is not required to do a capital improvements program because they don't own or operate a water sewer, water supply or sewage disposal system, but they can adopt a CIP at any time. So page thirty-one states that they will prepare one when necessary. That leaves it a little unclear. If they do want to adopt a CIP, it is very beneficial, especially during the review that's required under section sixty-one of the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act. And we talked a little bit about the residential developments and the landscape overlay district that they're proposing. A few more corrections here. And then finally, we just concluded that it's a very similar layout to the two thousand and fourteen plan. It's easy to read, it's organized, it includes some new maps, updated demographics and information from the citizen survey. And so we suggested that they consider just doing some cleanup of some of those minor issues before they take final action on this. And then, once they do that, they need to review the zoning ordinance and propose amendments to implement the policies and actions in the plan. Then, following your meeting tonight, we'll make sure that the minutes in your comments get sent back to the township. Overall, you know, we felt it was a good plan, easy to read, well-organized. It's not long, which is nice. Just could use some more cleanup and some suggestions for them to consider.
All right. Mr. Miller, you got any comments or questions?
Only really one. But when I look at the existing land use document, which is on page nine, beneficial, I think, the end road names. As we look at this, we start to try and figure out, okay, where is the spot that I'm looking at on this map? All the other maps have road names on it. That one we took, maybe just later that fell off from your documentation.
I would just echo what I heard said from Trudy again, that it was some of the read, easy to get through, user-friendly. I would just suggest maybe even enhance on that readability would be to add a little color to their headings. Like, a reader to feel a little different as they read just black and white words all the way through there. But I was struck with the survey results. You know, we have the opportunity to learn a little bit more about townships that I might not be as familiar with. And I thought the response from the survey at thirty-some percent was pretty good today. It did provide me the understanding of what it looks like that township is valuing and, and not so valuing. Obviously, they are, are very concerned about preserving the rural character of their township, and I think that's the strength of Trudy, in fact, they're very great, you know, additional housing is a high priority. I think they're trying to, or short-term rentals, or, or those kinds of options are not listed as desirable. And so I think they're very aggressive about, in that master plan, about wanting to preserve their, their rural character.
I enjoyed reading it. I've learned a lot about Casson Township.
Yeah.
About its geology, ecology, climate, or resources, wetlands. I enjoyed to learn, you know, the high value placed on preserving the agricultural element of their township. I liked it. It was good, thorough. I support it. That's it.
Mr. Black, easy reading, but yeah, the rural. The fact is, this county has so much rural, it's kind of really nice keeping that flavor while traveling around.
Mrs. Trumble?
I would echo that it was also very easy to read, and it was successful. And I don't hear the other comments.
Yeah, same here. I echo that. But it was very well done, in fact. So township worked through that as well, so it was kind of nice just to read off of that, found some ideas also, might be cheap. With that, any other comments or questions? All right. Not, we'll take a motion to forward this on as well.
So.
All right. All right, motion made by Mr. Nixon, supported by Mrs. Trumble, for the Casson Township Master Plan Review on to the Casson Township Board for their review and everything, along with Commissioner Stafford, Commissioner Thomas. Other discussion? All those in favor, signify by a say a aye. All both same sign. Motion carried. Excellent. Next up is reports. Number one, Housing Action Committee. Let's see, Commissioner Lawp is in here, I assume Trudy can close in on that a little bit.
We didn't have meetings, we're going to meet every other month. We didn't have a meeting to bring some things with House North and getting some discussions. Any of the A D U session, of course, that will be coming up in May, and then I've shared some information to you, and some other sessions at House North, yes. We're at right now, we're meeting in May.
Perfect. Parks and Recreation Committee, Mr. Noonan. Let's see, there's, I don't think anybody else here serves on that, you know, many on there or not.
I know they have meetings, but I wouldn't record that.
Move on from that. Next up, item three, attendance from anybody at any local meetings. Mrs. Trumble, you have anything on that?
I do not.
Mr. Black?
Yes, I, well, it's actually before the last, but I went down to meeting on capital improvements. We actually broke into groups and did a mock plan establishing funding for capital improvements. Meeting the criteria of a need for the capital improvement. They gave us a list of like ten, fifteen different capital improvements, and we had picked three of those out of there by giving a score. Neither the health reasons, public need, all that type of thing. And then after we did that, then how to fund it. Actually do it. We had a budget to work within, and that's what we had to work. So it was really interesting. I learned a lot doing it. Something I had never done.
I will, we had our public hearing at the last planning commission meeting in Sullivan Township regarding the rezoning there, and that got put on hold because we felt like it did not fit into our master plan. So we're going to continue working on that, revising our future land use map, and anything else, so that got pulled forward. So, should not want to be forward on down here for a week, I guess, so. And that, nothing else. Next up, we have communications. See, there's a packet on page forty-seven, so let's read.
Yes, we have a transportation plan that's come from the village of Empire, so that will be coming on your May agenda. I thought maybe even the June, but your next, your June meeting is June twenty-fourth, and that's when the county begins. So I did print out four copies. There's a, there's a link on, on page forty-seven to where you can look at online. But if anybody wants a hard copy to take and review it, we do have four copies here for anybody who's interested. And it seems like we're going to see master plans in the future. It seems like there's a lot of people working on their master plans right now.
So that's something that transportation, that's something that we'll have to review.
Yes. When the Planning and Zoning Enabling Acts were developed, it was changed so that plans within villages also come to us. The zoning ordinance requirements do not, but the plans do.
Questions for staff on that? All right. Next up, we got public comments. Excellent public, so we'll move on to staff comments. Any staff comments?
As I mentioned earlier, we're working on that session on accessory dwelling units. If you get a chance to watch even a portion of this video, it's called Helping Homeowners Become Home Creators. And it's from the East Coast, and it's really very interesting. They have a lot of different speakers on there that just show you accessory dwelling units and how it's helping their communities with their lack of housing. And if you can't find it online, you Google wherever, I'll be glad to share it with you. I, I thought it was very interesting. It's probably an hour and a half. I believe it's called Helping Homeowners Become Home Creators. So it's, I just found it really fascinating. There, there's probably five minutes of introductions. You could just surpass that and then get into some of the other things. And they had several different speakers, and they're all approaching it a little bit differently. Charlotte County and Antrim have proposed changes to their zoning to allow the accessory dwelling units. So at the May thirteenth session, we're going to have some speakers talking about this, talking about what other communities are doing and what their hope is with changes to accessory dwelling units.
I think they're actually talking a little bit about that within the village of Sunset. They're, yep.
And then one other thing I just wanted to mention is I've been thinking a lot about the planning commissions that we have in our communities, and it seems like over the years, we've gotten a lot of younger people getting involved. And so, just like our community is turning rarer, members on the planning commission are as well. So I'd like to start some conversations with the townships, so, you know, are they having difficulties in that? What do they see in the future as far as doing their planning and zoning, and, you know, are they having difficulty finding numbers to, to do this work? Just kind of start that discussion and see what they're thinking about in the sound room. I'll approach some of the townships with them, just get some feedback from them.
Yeah, certainly, and just by the solo challenge, we have a very young planning mission, so. I'm, yeah, definitely the youngest one out there, but, yeah, we got others that are certainly in childbearing ages, yeah, so.
How about one mortgage payment a year for, for planning commission members? That would help, sorry.
Any other questions for staff? Not, we'll move on to commissioner comments. Mrs. Trumble? Mr. Black?
I just hope Trudy's got a return flight.
Heck, yeah, we're both going.
Yes, it's round trip. I thought you meant that, hearing things getting canceled.
Mr. Nixon?
Yesterday was the last day for candidates for our supervisor position. Present their letters to a clerk. We received three applicants. Unless until the board is being, early Thursday morning, will make some decisions about how we're going to handle those three. Determine whether it's prepared, we have interviews, or whether knowing the candidates here to resume and person that's sufficient, we'll have some judgments to make about that. And Trudy, in response to your concern about more youthful people, that's an ongoing struggle in our township. In fact, our planning commission has nine members on it, and we're, we've had conversations that we may consider going to seven sometime. Currently, we should have nine and be able to replace a member with a, a new member, which will keep us at nine. We won't be addressing that until we really have a problem. But it's one of those things that we're finding in our community, the same faces are, are, are doing the same thing. And youth, you know, is what the school is all about and not the rest of the township. And so younger people and younger age households, we're just not finding enough people. That might be an interesting workshop that we could schedule. So how do you find parties to serve on committees?
All right, Mr. Miller? All right, did make a note on here. We got a mention about Mrs. Todd, I believe, Trudy brought it up to me that in our bylaws in states, if somebody misses three meetings, we gotta look by the board commissioner regarding that. So I guess I'll just have Trudy send an email or whatever. I don't, generally, they don't do anything about it. But I guess it's just a way where that's. And that, if there's no further business, I guess we'll adjourn the meeting. So you adjourn?